...in the ribbon cutting. Back inside, former Mayor Villarosa talked about international excitement over the many changes taking place in LA.
Whenever I go anywhere, Toronto just a few weeks ago, I can tell you that there's a buzz about LA.
And there will likely be more buzz here as the next phase of renovations get underway. At Los Angeles International Airport, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. Phase two will include new gates, improved customs and immigration inspection areas, and walkways to connect Terminals 3 and 4. It's slated for completion in 2015. And another sure-to-be iconic LA landmark will be the Broad Museum downtown, once that's completed. Our Channel 35 camera got a sneak peek inside the Broad Contemporary Art Museum, still under construction. Gil Reyes reports on some of its unique features.
Long before the paintings and sculptures arrive, work continues on another artwork: the building housing them.
You can tell from the renderings that this design is clearly very innovative.
Philanthropist Eli Broad talking about The Broad, his contemporary downtown LA art museum that's still a work in progress. On this media tour, we get a sneak peek of its features, like this honeycomb ceiling. It's made up of hundreds of fiberglass panels, each one built to capture the right amount of natural light.
In a kind of very beautiful way, very, very soft light, to be able to illuminate the spaces for art.
Once finished, the panels will also surround the building, giving the impression from the street that a veil is shrouding the museum. That dimple on the left of your screen accentuating that effect. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti draws parallels to the city of LA.
We have three simple ingredients to our success over time: sunlight, creativity, and hard work. Mix them together, and look what you get.
The glass elevator in the center of the museum is still under construction. Here's the finished product. Or you can take the stairs to access all three floors. As a reward for walking, you can rest on one of these landings and view bonus or hidden wall paintings from the balcony. Some 2,000 modern pieces will be on display here, from artists like Sherman, Koons, Warhol, Liechtenstein, and Ruscha. And also, just announced at this press conference, there will be free general admission to the public once this museum opens in about 14 months. At the future site of the Broad Museum in downtown, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Though general admission will be free, fees will sometimes be applied for special temporary exhibitions and other special events. Getting a driver's license comes with many requirements, and here in California, being in the country legally was one of them. That is, until now. Cindy San Luis reports on this landmark state bill.
Today, our highways are some of the least safe in America, and that's because we do not license, test, and insure all motorists on our highways.
But that is changing. The state legislature has passed Bill AB 60, which will provide California drivers' licenses to individuals who are living in the country illegally. Unlicensed drivers say the new bill means they won't have to live in fear.
We always try being afraid of getting pulled over by a police officer. Every time we get pulled over, we think of the worst, like deportation, or besides, they take, they pound our cars, we had to pay a fine, we had to pay dozens of dollars to get our car back.
The passage of this bill potentially affects more than a million people living in California.
This is a great victory for the immigrant community throughout the United States, but in addition, it allows folks to normally travel through our roads and contribute greatly to this state.
For over two decades in California, undocumented immigrants have been barred from obtaining a driver's license. Councilmember Gil Sadio has personally rallied for this cause for more than 10 years while he was in the state assembly.
This is the first time in over a decade that we have a governor who is ready, willing, and able to sign a driver's license, to put an end to two decades of this horrible situation that we've had on our highways.
California will join nine other states and the District of Columbia with laws enabling undocumented immigrants to obtain licenses. The bill gives peace of mind to those who say they need their car to earn a living.
If you don't drive, you can't go anywhere. Like, you had to go to school, you had to go to your jobs, you had to go everywhere with a car.
There are those who say this bill is another step toward amnesty, but Jorge Narriacabrera of the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles, or CHIRLA, says it's about public safety.
We want to make sure that anyone who's driving our roads has gotten through the proper training, has car insurance, and believes in making sure that our roads are safe.
Which, for a city of commuters, is a must. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
And the new driver's license law was an added reason to celebrate as people flooded the steps of City Hall to commemorate Mexican Independence Day. Gil Reyes has more from this year's El Grito festivities.
Que viva México!
A battle cry and then a bell. City leaders recreate the dramatic greeting signaling the start of Mexico's bloody battle for independence against Spain.
El grito es un grito universal, el sonido de la libertad.
That call to arms is known as El Grito, and it's celebrated every year in the city of Los Angeles with a free outdoor fiesta.
More than 1.2 million Angelinos are of Mexican descent. One out of every four residents of Los Angeles.
Newly-elected city councilman Felipe Fuentes organized the event in a rush, receiving the duty right after taking office in July, with less than a month and a half to plan.
He took the responsibility and the leadership to put this event together and bring it back to City Hall.
We're happy to be back at City Hall.
The celebration returned to the LA Civic Center after previous years at LA Live and Alvera Street. This year's Mexican Independence Day held special meaning following the state legislature's passage of a controversial bill allowing driver's licenses for undocumented immigrants.
A bill that reflects, to some extent, independence for immigrant motorists, and the state of California was passed, and we look forward to its signing soon.
All of us in the city are united in celebrating the cause of freedom, of independence, of self-determination.
Viva México, viva Los Angeles!
As flags waved proudly at this Mexican-American tradition. At City Hall, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The first El Grito took place in 1810, when Father Miguel Hidalgo urged the people of Dolores, Mexico, to take up arms against Spain. While Mexican-Americans celebrated El Grito, LA Central American community held a parade. And as Anna Marcos tells us, the driver's license bill was also the talk of the annual event.
A horse-drawn carriage kicked things off as the 30th Annual Central American Federation Parade took to the streets. Every country in the region, from Costa Rica and Panama, to El Salvador and Corazon, was in the house.
¡Viva El Salvador!
This time around, the country of Honduras took center stage.
Each year, a different country is highlighted, and this year, it's Honduras. A great country, a beautiful place with Mayan ruins, with a proud people, a place that, you know, has been very close to Los Angeles for many years.
The parade drew immigrants of all types, all colors, and ethnic origins. Many parade-goers also celebrating the recent passage of Law AB 40 in the California Legislature, which gives a California driver's license to undocumented immigrants.
By allowing folks who aren't here with documentation to get a driver's license, that ensures that they'll get insurance, that we'll know who they are, that they can be safer.
Every Californian will be tested, will have taken, paid their fee, you know, so it's a big victory for all the taxpayers.
But back to the party, because no Central American party is a party without a lot of shimmying and dancing. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
LA's commitment to build a bike path along its namesake river is one step closer to its end goal. Cindy San Luis takes us to Sherman Oaks, where residents are helping to break ground on the latest improvements along that stretch of the river.
Safe work, good work, and a great park. Here we go.
Councilmember Tom Labonge was joined by city officials and San Fernando Valley residents to break ground on the second phase of the Los Angeles Riverfront Greenway Project in Sherman Oaks.
The first phase was complete about four years ago, and that is between Laurel Canyon and Witsit.
It's cool to see this area finally, after all these years, getting the attention I think it deserves.
Now, when you find this spot here, it will be a solace for you.
The project includes landscaping, irrigation, paving, seating areas, ornamental fencing, a community greenbelt park, and an extension of the Los Angeles River Bike Path.
The bike path currently stretches from Griffith Park to the Elysian Valley. This project is an important portion to eventually, one day, complete the dream of having a bike path from the San Fernando Valley down to Long Beach.
Avid cyclist Tom Atkins can't wait for this phase to be completed in about seven months from now.
I may actually bicycle here. I generally did not, up until now. It's a dirt road and not very bicycle-friendly. But, you know, now, let's see what they put in. It'll certainly give me more reason to bicycle here as opposed to just to work.
We know that you already have bike paths and greenways along the river in Studio City. We know that you love them, and we know that you take good care of them.
Piece by piece and inch by inch, the bike path is extending throughout Los Angeles for all to enjoy. From Sherman Oaks, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
This project will eventually connect to a 102-mile trail system in the nation's second-largest urban area. That's according to the LA River Project Bureau of Engineering. And whether it's wanting a bike path in your neighborhood or wanting potholes fixed, new Mayor Eric Garcetti wants to hear about it, and he's not waiting around. In fact, he's knocking on doors and asking, "What do you need from City Hall?"
Is trash picked up good? Is there a lot of litter or anything like that?
Too busy to make a trip to City Hall? No worries, Mayor Eric Garcetti will come to you.
There's a lot of litter. The park functions, you know, every once, every once in a while, they have functions running weekends, and there is a lot of litter.
Garcetti and Councilmember Mike Bonin, together with volunteers, knocked on doors in the Venice community on a Saturday earlier this month to connect residents with city services as well as to hear their concerns.
How long you lived here?
Um, two months.
Wow, welcome. Welcome.
Where were you before? Uh, Washington DC.
Oh, well, welcome to LA.
But before the walk, the mayor and councilmember addressed the large assembly of volunteers gathered at the Oakwood Recreation Center on the importance of this exercise.
It's a pretty simple, but very effective way to make sure that Los Angeles isn't run by 1 percent. And I don't mean that by the wealth 1 percent, but by 1 percent of activists, but that 100 percent of Angelinos feel like this government works for them, listens to them.
What we're saying here today is Los Angeles is open to you. Los Angeles is open to our neighborhood.
And with that, the group headed out, knocking on the doors of homes, apartments, businesses, and churches before meeting back at the rec center for a debriefing to hear residents' feedback.
That it's a great place to be, high quality of life. Flipside was, you know, with that comes other pressures, and I heard at least two times, folks saying they don't know if they can afford to stay here.
A lot of people are concerned about the trash. There's a lot of renters here.
The neighbors complained basically about the stop sign in this street and a lot of nuisance.
No matter the issue, the mayor and councilmen say they will be taken seriously. As for residents, don't be surprised if the mayor comes knocking at your door. Some middle school kids are also taking the proactive approach to solve a global problem. They're tackling the issue of hunger by starting with changes at their own school. Anna Marcos takes a look.
A tree made of Styrofoam trays? Well, more on that later. But one thing is clear: some students at Thomas Star King Middle School are on a mission to help Mother Earth cut down on waste. Their project, 37 Degrees from Hunger, packs a double punch, as it helps cut food waste at their school and feeds the hungry.
Hopefully, this can be a footprint for other schools, because even a kid can make a difference.
Councilmember Tom Labonge honored the students for their project, which was born out of a class assignment in their Environmental Studies Magnet School program.
This is so special that the thought comes from the students. Get up here.
I make them look locally in their community, within walking distance, and try to solve an environmental issue.
The students didn't have far to look: their own school cafeteria.
There's a big food waste in the school. The trash can is full of food that's not even opened. So we decided to, what's, um, start a project on 37 Degrees from Hunger.
The students started collecting all the unopened milk cartons, the uneaten fruit and other food items, and donating them to local churches and food banks. They have even bought a huge refrigerator to store the food in.
Especially the milk's important, because I get asked every week, "Do you have milk?" And most of the time, we don't. So having this resource is really good.
But ecology doesn't just stop here for these students. Last year, they got the LA Unified School District to ban Styrofoam lunch trays at all its campuses. This pile here is a sample of just one day's worth of Styrofoam trays that this school used in the past.
All the Styrofoam that was being used, it was just being thrown away, not recycled properly, because when you walk out, all these kids are just going, and right into the trash can. No recycle, no separation.
Now, the Styrofoam serves as a memorial of sorts, and a reminder that kids can make a difference. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The students say they discover that 1 in 6 people in the country often go hungry, and if we wasted just 15 percent less food, we could feed another 25 million people. How to prevent our top graduates from leaving the region and taking their talents with them? Pledging not to text and drive, and lapel cameras on officers' uniforms? These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently hosted leaders of nine LA-area colleges and universities to discuss how better to retain graduates and also how to improve our economy. The universities represented were UCLA, USC, Loyola Marymount, Los Angeles Community College, Occidental College, Caltech, and the Cal State campuses of Los Angeles, Northridge, and Dominguez Hills.
Our economy cannot prosper if we don't have universities and institutions of higher learning that are keeping their students here when they graduate, that are keeping ideas here and helping them start companies that are in this geographical area.
The mayor's office is also working with the universities to promote STEAM programs in LA's middle and high schools. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. Five years ago, on September 12, 25 train passengers were killed in a collision in Chatsworth after it was believed that the train conductor was texting while operating the train. Councilmembers Mitchell Englander and Mike Bonin have joined AT&amp;T in launching the "It Can Wait" campaign, encouraging members of the public not to text and drive.
And much like drunk driving, texting takes an average of 4.6, 4.6 seconds on average off the road, your eyes off the road. I'm not saying don't text or don't read your emails while you're on your way to work, just go metro.
Each year, over 1.5 million accidents involve a distracted driver, yet studies show that 50 percent of people behind the wheel are still texting. Councilmember Mitchell Englander, who is chair of the Public Safety Committee, is asking the council to direct the Los Angeles Police Department in field-testing lapel cameras to be worn on police uniforms. While in-car cameras continue to be used by the LAPD, not all officers patrol in a vehicle. That's why Englander is asking for members of various LAPD units, such as SWAT and K-9 units, to field-test body cameras, which Englander says could ensure officer safety and resolve potentially controversial encounters. Councilmember Gil Sadio has introduced a motion in City Council for a report that will look into the installation of street signage or other appropriate markers, as well as possible sites for emergency call boxes along the LA River. This was in response to community concerns regarding the safety of the path that is used for biking, walking, and jogging. A member of the Alliance of River Communities first raised the issue of safety along the river during the council's Arts, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee meetings. Over two dozen young cancer survivors were recently treated to an afternoon they won't soon forget. As Anita Bennett reports, they got to rub shoulders with Hollywood stars and become honorary LAPD officers. The Sunshine Kids got a hero's welcome from the LAPD and the Police Department Band.
It's just crazy. It's just a good experience.
Nick Serrano and 26 other young people struggling with cancer became honorary police officers for a day during a special ceremony at the Universal City Sheraton.
And now I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The teens, some from as far away as Connecticut and Florida, then climbed into police cruisers and took a ride across town. And the Sunshine Kids were brought here to Raleigh Studios in Hollywood, where they were given the red carpet treatment, and they got to mingle with some stars.
It's exciting, because not much people get to see famous people from where I'm at.
Among the famous faces, veteran actor GW Bailey from the TV series Major Crimes, and Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck.
These are some very heroic young men and women that are going through a very tough time, and it's important for us to recognize that and to try to get them, you know, a little, little interest and a little acknowledgement in their day.
We give them memories. They'll leave here with all kinds of fantastic memories of people they met, places they saw.
The students say their week-long visit to LA is something they'll never forget.
It's changed me in a little way. It's told me, like, that there's still good people in the world that want to help you and don't judge you for your flaws, and just go with you.
Hopefully, next year, I can have the chance to volunteer, help, and actually return the favor that they gave to me.
Overall, it was an experience that brought a little sunshine to these kids' lives. In Hollywood, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The Sunshine Kids Foundation and private donors paid for the students' visit to LA. In this week's List of Things to Do, a drum festival followed by a jazz festival and also retail therapy. The City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs and Friends of Watts Towers Art Center present the 32nd Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival on Saturday, September 28, from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. In celebration of the Watts Towers Art Center's first 52 years, the festival's lineup will take the audience into a musical journey around the world with the synthesis of pre-Columbian and contemporary music and dance in the ancient Mexican tradition. The program also includes a southern Italian percussionist, as well as Japanese taiko music. It takes place at the Watts Towers Art Center campus, which is located at 1727 East 107 Street. And the very next day, on Sunday, September 29, also at the Watts Towers Art Center campus, will be the 37th Annual Simon Rodeo Watts Towers Jazz Festival from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Sunday's celebration will feature traditional jazz, performances with the fusion of jazz and Afro-Cuban flavors, as well as a classic and spoken-word teen troupe. The festival's activities and programs also include the arts exhibition Through the Eyes of Charles Dixon, guided tours of the Watts Towers, children's activities, and food for sale, along with arts and crafts. For more information on both festivals, go to wattstowers.org. Who says shopping has to be done in a mall or at the department store? The Port of Los Angeles invites you to the Keep on Truckin' Bonanza, taking place on Saturday, September 28, from 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. The fun, family-friendly festival will feature retail trucks parked on the port's lot at the port's craft marketplace, located at 110 East 22nd Street in San Pedro. The first retail truck bonanza received such a great reception that the port couldn't resist having one more before summer ends. Parking and admission are free. There will also be a raffle to win tickets to the new Cirque du Soleil traveling show, Totem, at the port. Go to craftedportla.com for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And that traveling Cirque du Soleil show at the port, while Yana Kay gives us a sneak peek of this highly anticipated attraction that hopes to bring even more locals and tourists to our city's Harbor District. Cirque du Soleil dancer Eric Hernandez is performing a traditional Native American hoop dance. It's part of the new Cirque du Soleil show coming to San Pedro in October.
The dance tells a story. It tells the story of the different plants and animals that the Native Americans saw. And it also ties in with the evolution theme of the show.
The new Cirque du Soleil show is called Totem, and it's coming to the Port of Los Angeles for the first time as part of a traveling show. Cirque officials say they hope to have a positive impact on the community by boosting businesses and tourism, and they're counting on Totem's depiction of the incredible journey of mankind to draw big crowds.
When you walk into that big top, and it's sort of a transition into this fantasy world, and you sit down, and then you smell the popcorn and that sort of thing, it really, you know, puts you in a different place, and for the next, you know, two hours, you get to forget everything else and just be awe-inspired.
Totem will be at the port for a one-month run, and local officials couldn't be more proud that San Pedro will be taking center stage.
I love this community and just that we can actually open up to the rest of Los Angeles and welcome them in, and have something that is identifiable for them, which is Cirque. So it's a known entity, they know what it is, and that's a reason for them to come down here and revisit the community.
Now, local restaurants here in downtown San Pedro will be offering discounts for folks with show tickets. Totem's opening night is October 11. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week. Totem premiered in 2010 and features more than 50 dancers and acrobats. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
All right, I want to welcome everybody to this morning's council meeting. It's Wednesday, September 25th. Mr. Clerk, I believe we do have a quorum. Could you call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscaino, Cidio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Crane, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, West, and 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Labange's moves, Parks seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bunnin moves, Fuentes seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, before running through the agenda, there is a request from the Office of Finance to continue Item 1A to October 9th.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Cards. Do we have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. We have cards on Items 1 and 4.
Let's hold those items. Mr. Joy B.
For Mr. Weezer, Mr. President, after comment, if we can note and file Item Number 4, please.
Okay. Do you have that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. That is called special for cards, though.
Members, any specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we move on to the next section?
Yes, sir, we may. Items 7 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. A public hearing for Items 7 and 8 was not satisfied during the Economic Development Committee's consideration of these matters, and if cards are in for any, they should be held.
Okay. Members, any specials? And you said 7 and 8?
Yes, sir. 8 does have cards, I'm being told, so we should hold 8 on the desk.
8 has 8 cards, so we'll hold it. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Where are we now, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes us to Items 9 through, excuse me, 19 through 35, their items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before us. Cards from the public.
Yes, sir. We have cards on Items 19, 21, 28, 32, and 35, sir.
Okay, let's hold those items. Members, Mr. Buscaino.
Item number 18, fourth with, if you can, please.
Okay, Item 18, fourth with, for Mr. Buscaino. Members, any specials on Items 19 through 35? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Mr. President, that brings us to Item 36. It's an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
You know, let's hold it for now. Let me do a little research. We don't have Mr. Krikorian here today, so I'll talk to our own city attorney and determine how we'll move forward on that. So we'll hold that. What else do we have?
Mr. President, that brings us to the continuation agenda. It is Item 37. It's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, good. Members?
Mr. President, we continue because our great council member of the Port of Los Angeles wasn't here yesterday. If we could call 37 special.
Oh, this is the item that you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. All right, so we will hold that since we do have the member of the great 15th District with us today. With that said, Madam, I mean, Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations.
Mr. Parks, are you, you're not ready? You want to wait? Okay, no, just let me know. So let's go through some of these items quickly. Want to do Item 8? Hey, Mr. Sacks, you want to come down for Item 8? That's the one card on Item 8. Arnold Sacks, welcome. Item 8.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. The Convention Center Board of Commissioners, so my concerns here, A and B. Way back when Janice Hahn sat here in the city council chambers, there was a big to do with AEG regarding advertising rights in the complex. And AEG won the advertising rights for the Convention Center, and Councilman Labange asked that a percentage of those advertising rights go to help the city libraries. So far, there's no advertising. AEG is going to manage the Convention Center, so there's no money to help the libraries. That's one concern. Number two concern, there was a story in today's newspaper that AEG is on the clock as far as its expansion for the football stadium. What does that mean for the expansion for the Convention Center? And what does that mean as far as putting on hold? Any people who want to book conventions at the Convention Center might have to deal with construction. Do you have a plan in place for that? And what's the story? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. No speakers on the queue, so let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, then you know what I want to do? Mr. Labange, why don't, if you're ready and Mr. Buscaino is ready, let's jump to Item, was it 37?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
Whoever wants to start off.
Just wanted to let you know, recently, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and out at city expense, I traveled to Jakarta, Indonesia. Jakarta is a great country of Indonesia, largest city. They have a great port there, Congresswoman, and we thought it would be important to have this relationship of a sister port. Mr. Buscaino will explain that because as it works, the technology of today, it's the fourth-largest country in the world is Indonesia. And when I met with the ambassador to Indonesia, he spoke of the fact that we should not forget Indonesia, and there's 65 million people in Indonesia. It's the largest Muslim country in the world. And we did take a tour of the port, and they were very excited about learning about Los Angeles's greening of our port and the movement of goods. So as the president of Sister City, I just wanted to say this is one valuable improvement that we're making between Jakarta, Indonesia, and Los Angeles, California. And I thank all that are involved, including the Indonesian consulate here in Los Angeles, which is located in your district, Mr. Weston, right there at Mariposa and Wilshire.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labange. You know, Port of Los Angeles is the number-one trade gateway in the country. It is the international gateway for cargo, and it ought to be the international gateway for people as well. And this is why we're moving forward on waterfront redevelopment at the Port of Los Angeles. And opportunities like this before us, colleagues, where we can really embark literally on a relationship with other countries across the world, specifically Indonesia, it's critical to do just that. And to support this sister port relationship gives us an opportunity to share success stories, to encourage trade between our respective countries. I ask for your aye vote. Thank you. I believe we had Mr. Lebattique from the port on his way, but nonetheless, he is not here with us. I wanted him to share with us the numbers as far as our movement of goods on import-exports in relation to Indonesia. So with that, I ask for your aye vote, and let's continue to encourage these sister port relationships. I'm pushing for to have a sister port relationship in Italy. So with your leadership, Mr. Labange will make that happen. Thank you.
Okay, thanks to the both of you. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, I do want to say we've got a very important presentation that will be coming soon, but we want to recognize former school board member, former school board member, state senator, ambassador, and congressperson Diane Watson. Now, I'm going to let Mr. Bernard, I'm going to let Mr. Parks coordinate the presentation. I just wanted to introduce you, and then he will direct when the podium is yours. But anyway, thank you for a lifetime of service. And members, I almost got in trouble on that one. Okay, so let's move on. What is it, 19 and... 19 and 21, we have commission appointments. We'll start off with 19, which was held special by Arnold Sacks and John Walsh. So I didn't see John, but John, if you're here, please make your way to the center aisle, and you too, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks.
Mr. President, there are no commissioners in the House. We're just talking to the council. Anyway, LSA, a part of the pilot that's payment in lieu of taxes, so they don't pay taxes sort of like DWP with their transfer, and they transfer funds. LSA doesn't pay taxes on its property. That's really a big concern because nobody really knows how much property they own and the differential between their taxes, what their tax bill might be, and what the transfers they make. In addition, the, when Councilman Alacan was here, he made a motion, or there was something passed in council chambers regarding the importance of having them come in and having the city council have an opportunity to look at their agendas. And because it's also a nonprofit, the meetings aren't open to the public, the agendas aren't open to the public, and you don't really have the authority to change those agendas. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. Always a pleasure to speak in front of Congressman Watson. She was a guest on our Neighborhood Point of View Cable Access Show until Jose Weezer got rid of cable access. This is now...
He is not talking about the day on the subject.
You may see me arrested here today. This is concerns Elise Bulk Homeless Services Authority Commission reappointment. This is concerns Elise Bulck, Homeless Services Authority Commission reappointment. That means she's been on here before. Now remember, we now have a new strain of tuberculosis in LA. Only a few places in Africa and Asia, hardcore poverty, have new strains. There is no new strain of tuberculosis in anywhere in Latin America. So what we want you to do is... We want to report on the tuberculosis. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Labange.
I want to let you know, Elise Buick is one of the finest citizens in our city. She's a resident of the Fourth District, has wonderful children, but also she's involved beyond. And united way is what tries to unite us, and her energy that she's created in united way has made it a factor in our community. I strongly recommend an aye vote. Someone who has passionately helped the homeless and the needy professionally as well as in her whole life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and I concur. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now I want to go to item twenty-one. Arnold, you still... It's another commissioner, and Mr. Sacks, we will call you to the center aisle.
Yes, thank you again. This is a Commissioner for the Transportation Commission. And my concerns, a couple of weeks ago, you might have remembered when Councilman Buscaino and Councilman Englander made a presentation regarding road street repair and how it would cost $3 billion, blah, blah, blah. The most important part of that whole presentation, though, was when Councilman Englander mentioned that back in the early, late nineties, the beginning of the 2000s, they did an inventory electronically of all the streets and all the roads that needed to be repaired. And yet, when the ARA funds, America Fast Forward Funds, came through to the city, there was problems with Department of Transportation putting out requests for proposals because they didn't have them properly made up. They had an inventory of the streets that needed to be repaired, but they had the wrong request for proposals. We need some people on Board of Transportation who can take this by the teeth. The council can't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Mr. Eisenberg here. I want to stand and acknowledge him and support Eric Garcetti's appointment. Eric has done some incredible work, specifically in the downtown San Pedro Historical Property-Based Improvement District. He gets the importance of traffic flow and how critical it is to make sure when people visit our city that they're not stuck in traffic and the relationship between the movement of traffic with business and what we're doing in the harbor area. He's embraced it. He's knowledgeable on the issue of moving traffic across the city. And what he's done in Hollywood specifically, he's turned that place around, involved in the P bit in Hollywood. So Eric, I want to stand and acknowledge you and thank you for your leadership in the city and your commitment to improving the quality of life and the commitment in improving the flow of traffic specifically. So congratulations, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, sir. There are no speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now I'm going to bring up item four, called special by Arnold Sacks. Item four, called special for a card. Just squeeze past Mr. Buscaino.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. And again, the reason I actually held this is there's actually four items on your agenda that refer to easements, but this one in particular refers to easement for the street, sidewalk, and storm drain purposes, while the other ones either refer to a street easement, a sidewalk easement, something to that effect. And we've had numerous conversations in the council chambers regarding the status of the sidewalks and the streets in the city of LA and how it's going to be funded, how it's going to be inventoried, how it's going to be done this way. And Councilman Bonin mentioned that his area, an area in his district, needs to have curbs put in before the streets can be put in, and that's not included in the easement. And each one of these portions of this easement is money, 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 money. So all the easements end up costing $3,300 in fees, but this one has three parts to it. Money, money, money. How are you going to pay for these easements? How are the streets going to be paved? We heard about the plan from Councilman Buscaino and Englander, $3 billion. Ha, ha, ha. The last time we heard a plan about $1 billion, remember Measure R? That was $1 billion a year in transportation funding. But the year before, 2008, the MTA had collected like $700 million in tax money for Prop A and Prop C, so they doubled it as an estimate. Keep your eyes on these little minor details. It's your money, and you should ask questions from your council people about how they're going to pay for these things. Why... If they can do an electronic inventory of the streets, why can't they do an electronic inventory of the sidewalk? They're interconnected, as you can see from the easement.
Mr. President, this is item four. Mr. Buscaino had requested that this matter be received and filed.
Okay, without objection. That brings us to what item?
Mr. President, that brings us to...
We're going to do one. I found I beat you, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir.
So we're going to do item one. We'll call on John Walsh and... What is this? Maybe a Kenneth Bonds? Okay, Mr. Sacks.
John Walsh, blogging at...
I mean, Mr. Walsh, I apologize.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or go straight to J. Walsh Confidential. This concerns item one. These are recorded liens, unpaid taxes. You know, this same lien has been on here for about four months. Pacific Dining Car, you all go there to eat. All you have to do is they'll give you a few free meals, and that's... It'll take care of it, and then the Pacific Dining Car won't have to pay the $33,600 you owe. You can easily be bought off by the Pacific Dining Car. And Vernon Fuel Distribution, anything concerning Vernon is crooked. Infinity Auto Park, boy, that's big, but not as big as the traffic here in LA. You've got three Infinity Auto Parks. They owe you money. And of course, Gil and Sumra. We all know Gil and Sumra. They used to have a knife-throwing act in Vaudeville. Now, excuse me, four Infinity Auto Parks. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, now if we can get a Kenneth Bonds... Kenneth, are you here? Jose Angeles, are you here? Okay, let's move on. Let's prepare. You guys almost missed your moment.
Sorry, ladies and gentlemen. We were speaking with representatives from the Office of Finance.
Go right ahead.
My name is Kenneth Bonds. I represent Infinity Auto Park. This is Jose Angeles for items one, C, D, E, and G. Essentially, today, we just wanted to request the continuance of this hearing. Infinity, the city contends that Infinity owes a certain amount for back taxes. Infinity doesn't agree with the amount, but wants to work with the city on paying them and wants to submit documentation to the city on these audits that will more accurately reflect the numbers, and also wants to potentially make a settlement offer to the city that covers all of its taxes, not just these, the other outstanding ones. Audits have been performed by the parking network. So today, essentially, we just want to request the continuance so that we can work with the city and present a settlement offer. Anything else?
Thank you. Okay, let me defer... Well, Mr. Weisar is not here. Mr. Sadio, I think one of their concerns falls in your district. They are making a request for a continuance, and I would like to have some guidance from the council member of the district. So why don't... This is what I'm going to do. I'm just going to hold this in limbo for a moment so that I can chat with the other members and try to figure out what it is they want to do. So we will just take this item, Mr. Clerk, and stash it wherever we need to, and we'll bring it up a few minutes later.
Very good, sir.
Okay, thank you. Twenty-eight?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item twenty-eight, called special for cards.
Item twenty-eight. And John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. And we just want to say, this concerns street lighting. The best street lighting in LA is in Hollywood because the neighborhood activist has been fighting for this since before I was born, okay? It's a long time ago. And this is Hobart and Marathon. Now, there has been a lot of crime in Hollywood. Fortunately, Gormala is gone, and now we consider the crime is... We'll be going down under Captain Verone, and we always support these lighting districts because these criminals, they don't like lights. They don't... I can't believe when I go to Highland Park and see how dark the corners are, how dark it is, and then you go to Hollywood. That's because you didn't fight for it. Now, remember, they're always going to keep a long shot on me because you don't... They don't want you to see my face. HollywoodHighlands.org. But you hear my voice, don't you?
Menacing. All right, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, pardon me, sir. That item, along with the other ordinances from today, will go over one week for a second consideration.
All righty. So the two gentlemen that were up here representing Infinity, I have gotten sign-off from the members that we will continue that for two weeks. So, Mr. Clerk, what date would that be?
Two weeks would be October nine, sir. And those are items one C, one D, one E, and one G. If I'm not mistaken, one B and one F are still before you, sir.
Okay, so what... Your item's been continued for two weeks. If you want to work out a deal, you better start working on it now. All right, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And that's B and F, sir.
All right. Mr. Parks, would you like to... Okay, so what we're going to do now is... Mr. Parks has the floor for today's last presentation. Mr. Parks, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'd ask Diane Watson, our retired Congresswoman, to come up at this time, Ambassador Duane Moody, and also Mr. Roosevelt Greer. And we're also joined today by a number of students that are chaperoned by Tori Bailey from John Muir, Agape, View Park Prep, and also the Youth Justice Center at the Free LA High School. We asked them to come into the center aisle, also the students behind us. Today, we're here to basically declare that September 25th...
Hold on one second, Mr. Parks. Don't be shy. He called you. Whoever he called, come up and stand behind him. It's very important that you do so. You all look great. Come and get on the camera. Hold his time. Want to say hello to my friend Apollo? I recognize you in that beard. Now, that's a good-looking group, Mr. Parks.
It's all in your perception. Okay, ready?
Floor is yours.
We're going to declare today, September 25th, as I Heard It Through the Grapevine Day in the city of Los Angeles. The city of LA is proud to join with Motown in celebrating the 46th anniversary of I Heard It Through the Grapevine song, which was written by Norman Whitfield and Barrett Strong along with various Motown artists in 1966. I Heard It Through the Grapevine was originally recorded by Smokey Robinson and The Miracles but was not released. Producer Whitfield proceeded forth with Gladys Knight and The Pips and recorded I Heard It Through the Grapevine with Barry Gardie, founder of Motown, released this version in September 1967. I Heard It Through the Grapevine reached number two on the Billboard music charts, remained there for six weeks, and Marvin Gaye's version later skyrocketed to the top of the Billboard charts, landing number-one position for seven weeks. A song first covered and performed by legendary artists as Creedence Clearwater Revival, The Temptations, Edwin Starr, Elton John, Tina Turner, Roger Troutman, and Michael McDonald. In 1986, The California Raisins began a mega... Became a mega star with the hit song, I Heard It Through the Grapevine, and a series of claymation commercials with music icons such as Buddy Miles, Ray Charles, and the king of pop, Michael Jackson. In 2008, Rolling Stone magazine voted this song as one of the greatest songs of all time. Today, the city of Los Angeles, along with the mayor, do hereby declare September 25th as I Heard It Through the Grapevine Day in the city of Los Angeles. I ask the Congresswoman at this time to come up.
Let's give them a round of applause, though. They deserve that. And more. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the city council, and our own special Councilman Parks. It's a privilege to be with you today, back in these chambers of this most powerful city. I think it's the best in the world. Today, this is I Heard It Through the Grapevine Day. We are using that song as a clarion call to the young people who stand behind me. And we have a mascot who represents what we are striving for in this city, in this state, in this country, and in the world. Because you see, if we reach out to those young people who really, in their hearts and their minds, believe that we can bring peace to our streets, and we can bring peace to our streets with music, so no better song than I Heard It Through the Grapevine. And that grapevine spreads around this global and this continent of ours. We have a mascot, and I'd like that mascot to step forward. You remember The California Raisins, and they used I Heard It Through the Grapevine to represent an agricultural business that is synonymous with California. And maybe you haven't realized, but 85% of the land in California is agriculture. So I Heard It Through the Grapevine, Motown, Motor City, Detroit, is now out here. Barry Gardie, the founder. And we have been joined by The California Raisins, and they are the mascot. And what will happen with all of these students will be that they will be given an award and a scholarship. The scholarship will be an instrument so they can use that instrument to take them into the future in a productivity way. So I'd like to introduce Duane Moody. And would you go the rest of the way for us?
Absolutely. Warm greetings, everybody. This is a historic moment in time, especially here in Los Angeles, California. We have Motown, the original A and R man, Mr. Mickey Stevenson. He started with Motown back in 1957, when it was only a dream for Mr. Barry Gardie. We also have Russ Reagan. Russ was able to be the promotional man back in the '60s with Motown, but he went on to do greater things. He discovered Elton John. He discovered Neil Diamond. He discovered Barry White, and he went on to create five movie soundtracks that was nominated for Oscars. We have The Gifts of Life and Future Tomorrow, which is to kids. Bernard Parks, we commend you. We truly commend you of taking this upon the world and bringing these youth, these kids, with us because we have found out through the... Because we have found out through the grapevine that the inner-city musical youth are on the streets, and what's at their disposal is mass weapons of destruction. The most important thing is to bring Motown, so we could be able to raise money and instruments to be able to bring these kids off the streets into a musical arts and culture environment where they'll pick up a musical instrument and create a sound of peace. Okay? I would close with this right here. It's okay. I would close with this right here, is that Detroit joins Los Angeles in celebrating I Heard It Through the Grapevine here in Los Angeles, California. And I'll be brief with this. A proclamation, I Heard It Through the Grapevine, whereas the city of Detroit, original home of Motown Records, is proud to join with the city of Los Angeles in celebrating the 46th year anniversary of I Heard It Through the Grapevine, when Mickey Stevenson and Barry Gardie decided to release Gladys Knight and The Pips' version 46 years ago on September 28, 1967, and went straight up the chart. So I thank you, David Bean, the mayor of Detroit. And in closing, we have the rainbow of the kids that are here. The most important thing, they would leave today with a homework assignment in terms of doing an essay in terms of what did it mean coming to City Hall, the co-host Bernard Parks, and the Congresswoman Diane Watson, to be able--
And Rosie Greer.
And Mr. Rosie Greer, to be able to do a essay and turn the essay into us. And I thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you. Ambassador Moody, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council and all of the elected officials, we'd like to present to you and your organization and your program a certificate declaring today as I Heard It Through the Grapevine Day.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay. We're going to have Mr. Rosie Greer speak for a second. We only have a couple of minutes.
Well, I am honored to be here in the presence of all these elected officials and great men and women in the audience. My job was to pray. And I would like to say, regardless of how powerful we get in life, how rich we get, let us always remember that it's God that caused all this to take place. So I would like to take a moment to thank and invite the almighty God to join us in this celebration as we reach out in love to touch the lives of young people as they struggle to find their way. Many of us have grown up and got our position in life, and now the young men and women are watching us. I pray, heavenly Father, that you would guide these young people, that they will see us working with them, guiding them, giving them the resources that they need to develop the skills and talent that they have, that they may be a blessing to us and to those that are following them. And I ask all of this, Father. I ask you to bless every person that's in this room, that's in the sound of my voice, that we will always remember, and let everyone say this after me. I am precious. I am valuable. I am unique. I am one of a kind. There's no one in the world like me. And I'm a winner. Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, we still have a separation of church and state even after that wonderful prayer. Thank you very much. We're going to go back.
Thank you so much, Mr. Parks. This was a great one. Mr. Labange.
Mr. Parks, before you get away, Roosevelt Greer, before you get away, Congresswoman, it's so important that you're doing this, because at 3:01, children need us. 3:01 in the afternoon, it's not just on the athletic fields or in the academic classes, it's music. And Heard It Through the Grapevine is like water to our soul, okay? And I do want to say, it's so special to be with all of you Congresswomen for all that you've done, but Roosevelt Greer was a great deputy to Mayor Bradley. And he was the first, second one. I met Bill Elkins first, then Roosevelt Greer on the 21st floor here in City Hall when I was on the Youth Council. I rise to the great Roosevelt Greer, who was a great athlete, but also a great humanitarian and a great protector of all of us. Thank you, Roosevelt Greer. But thank you, Barry Gardie, Heard It Through the Grapevine. I agreed with all those things. I am special. I am precious in all those things, but the one I couldn't say is I can't sing. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
All right, and again, congratulations. Labange.
All right, let's reconsider the 12 members. We have 12 members now. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, two, the items for reconsideration would be items 11 through 14 and 22 through 31. Again, 11 through 14 and 22 through 31.
Thank you very much. Let's open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, we should now vote on those items. Again, 11 through 14 and 22 through 31.
Let's vote on them. So open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. So ordered.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 32, called Special for Cards.
All right, 32, Special for Cards. We have one card in the sound of my voice. Mr. Walsh, are you still here? Thank you. Sergeant, if you could, please. Thank you. John Walsh, item 32.
I saw Rosie Greer play at the Polo Grounds. That's how old I am. 80 cents to get in. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This, again, is number 32, and this concerns REAP. And we're 100% in favor of the rent escrow account program. And again, you're doing a good job, and when you do a good job, we say it. You did a good job on this presentation. I wish everything ran as smoothly. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. Thank you.
No speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 35, called Special for Cards.
Again, Mr. Walsh. You're out of time, Mr. Walsh, so relax for public comment. I was informed by the clerk, you're out of time. I don't like to be the bearer of bad news, you know that. So... Mr. -- Mr. -- Double check there. No, no, no. You got a minute, John. Here we go. You got a minute. Thank you, John. Thank you.
First of all, they won't show my face. Now they don't want to show my voice. The clerk was wrong. The clerk is never wrong in my favor. The clerk is wrong in your favor. I just want to say, okay, okay, the next -- I just want to say on number 35, this is concerning the Hollywood Walk of Fame. I want to -- you know, this is the first time in history, two of the three people you are honoring are African-American. They're minorities. It -- as bad as -- as few African-Americans as there are on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, there are virtually none Hispanics and virtually no Asians. It's a white boys and a white girls' club, the Hollywood Walk of Fame, because they charge an enormous amount of money to get on that Walk of Fame. I'm glad that Babyface is on there, and I'm glad that you put Barry White on there. And all I want to say, and I never take the full time, HollywoodHighlands.org, come and see two black artists being placed on Hollywood Walk of Fame.
Mr. Walsh has completed his comments. Mr. Clerk, let's open the rolls on these. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 36. It was an item scheduled for closed session.
Any comment on 36? We have no cards on 36. We're going to do general public comment before we get -- lay 36 on the table, will you, Alan?
Very good, sir.
Okay, let's go general public comment. Is that okay, Mr. Clerk?
Absolutely, sir.
All right, from Lenox, California, by way of the MTA, Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for the reference to the MTA. They are having their board meeting tomorrow, and hopefully, there'll be an election. The new mayor and his new representatives will be elected to the Crenshaw nonprofit. As of now, they've been in one meeting, but they haven't been elected to replace the outgoing mayor and the outgoing representative who was on the city, on the Crenshaw nonprofit. So take note of that. That being said, yesterday was a fascinating meeting at the Board of Supervisors. Miguel Santana showed up. There was a discussion about the health initiative that was going to be -- that's supposed to be put on the ballot, or will be put on the ballot because they reached the number of signatures that are required. Miguel Santana said the city is already facing a $200 million deficit, as of now. $200 million in deficit. So, boys, we better get working, boys and young lady. We better get working on this deficit. Maybe you'll have some discussions on how you will par down this deficit. And that doesn't include, is that deficit deficit? Is that debt -- incurred deficit from paying, like, on the new police bill, new police headquarters, on the convention center, and any of the properties that the city owns? And what's the story with the parking garages? And there was an article in the newspaper about reinventing the CRA. But what was really interesting was the part where it said the CRA gets to keep, or got to keep, the taxes that were created, the new tax, the new property tax that would be created from the enhancement of the property, which is somewhat similar to what Prop 13 does by allowing organizations that don't have 100% ownership, they get to keep, they get to maintain the same property value.
I complete your comment, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Marine, Henry Marine. He's right there, John. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. Today's my wife's birthday, and her initials are VTM, and that stands for vested time and money. And she says 50% of the money that you sheltered from the pay of others than me is hers, and she wants to know when you're going to account for it. Hackla &amp; Co. MOUs show members of the Hackla Board and the City Council have a history of misrepresenting Hackla &amp; Co. employees as Hirnhall employees. Therefore, nobody has accounted for the money that was diverted from the pay of others than me and diverted from public employee pension and benefit plans for the last 22 years. Now you're going around crying about there ain't enough money in the pension plan to cover the present people with no tears, and you're going to bring tears to my eyes to see that these people that accept a trusted position in the City of Los Angeles cannot be trusted to account for the time and money of others than me. Now you establish intent in May to account for this time and money for the first time in history. So this time, you know, agenda is the acronym and a product of another government employee not doing anything. And we got 15 of them here. I'm starting to feel like a pool table. I got all these big rollers here with numbers on them, trying to get in my pockets, and they ain't getting hot. Ain't anybody keeping score. Now, come on. I don't want to see y'all get busted. I come here to help you. I give a constructive criticism every time I come here to stop you from me having to prosecute you for a constructive trust and a ERICode 504 violation. And you know what that is, 504? Embezzlement, divert money from public employees for the benefit of others. Thank you.
John Walsh, Hollywood, California.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Hello out there. Now, you notice the person before me was an African-American. You out there, while you're watching, he could have had long blond hair, white skin, and blue eyes. When we speak, what do we get? We get a long shot. When they speak, or their favorite few speak, they get loving close-ups. I'm paying for this. And who makes the decision? Not the guy with the camera. You have told them not to show our faces. Okay, Jose Wezar isn't here. Again, I am concerned. If you read Rick Orlov a couple of days ago, Jose Wezar's temporary office in East L.A. is possessed by the devil. That's not what I say. That's what the L.A. Daily News says. And Mr. Lopez from LAPD has exorcised. Now, if you come to my website, HollywoodHighlands.org, you will see a picture of the fiend that stalks the City Hall. Now, Wezar isn't here. Now they gave me the close-up because I asked for it. Okay, you can go back to the long shot. HollywoodHighlands.org. Okay, let me tell you about Jose Wezar. He is under -- the fiend is after him. If you go to our website, you will see a picture of Votar, the fiend that stalks City Council. Why is Votar stalking City Council? Because you're named after the angels. Now, this isn't my position. This is the position of Jose Wezar printed, and go and read about it in Mayor Sam. And I can understand why Satan feels at home here. I can understand it. It's kind of creepy in here, isn't it? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, that's, I believe, the last general public comment speaker. Mr. Clerk. Mr. Englander, are you going to shepherd 36? And Dion, did you say, do we have to? Can we do this in open?
Unless there is a desire from another council member to discuss this in closed session, it can be done in open session.
Well, let's start out with Mitchell and see how it goes. Go on, Mitchell.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any reason to go in a closed session unless another council member desires to do so. This was an issue with a bid, the San Pedro Historic Waterfront Property Business Improvement District. We've gone through this with the city attorney's office. It's a repayment to the bid that is required and justified according to their documents that we have been submitted to everybody. There doesn't seem to be any opposition. We've had this issue with some other bids as well. We've gone through extensive conversation and dialogue regarding the downtown bid as well, when we had some of these same issues. And so, go ahead, and I would recommend that we approve the settlement pursuant to the recommendation per the city attorney.
All right. And, Mr. President, before voting in the case entitled Mesa RHF Housing Partners versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation that the city will satisfy plaintiffs for all payments made by plaintiffs with respect to assessments by the San Pedro Historic Waterfront Property and Business Improvement District.
And for further--
Mr. City Attorney.
For further information, the settlement would result in a dollar amount of $19,113.80 per year for five years for a total amount of $95,569. This amount could increase by up to 5% per year for a total amount of $110,896.11.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, before we move on, I'd like to call on the city attorney for an announcement.
Yes, just for the record, Mr. Greer's unscripted comments during the presentation were his own and should not be taken as city council's endorsement of certain sectarian beliefs.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements? Okay, could everybody in the chambers, please rise? I'll ask one more time, announcements, members? Okay, we will move on to adjourning motions. Okay, we will move on to adjourning motions. Mr. Price? I'll, Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jack Dillon, a longtime San Pedro resident who passed away September 17th at the age of 75. Jack was a retired member of 47 years of the ILW Locals 13 and 63, and served as a business agent treasurer for Local 13. He was an active member of the ILW Pensioner Executive Board and Memorial Association for 10 years. He is survived by his loving wife Vera, wife of 40 years, daughter Jamie, sons Joe and Michael, and numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Funeral was held yesterday at Green Hills Memorial Chapel in Rancho Palos Verdes. Jack's going to be missed. May Jack Dillon rest in peace. Secondly, it's with tremendous sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Janet Shower, a true pillar of the Harbor Gateway community. She was 84 years young. Janet was born in Point Marion, Pennsylvania, and moved to Los Angeles in 1950 and settled into Harbor Gateway in 1951, and remained there ever since. In 1963, Janet graduated from Harvard College Nursing Program and worked at the Torrance Memorial Hospital for 25 years. She retired in 1991. Since that time, she's done tremendous work as a volunteer in the Harbor Gateway community, including serving on the Police Advisory Board, LAPD Harbor Division, and helping to distribute food to low-income families at the Boys and Girls Club. She was dedicated to improving the quality of life for the residents of Harbor Gateway, in particular for the young people in the community. She was instrumental in the building of the Gateway's first pocket park, which we named in her honor. In 2012, she was named Pioneer Woman of the Year, not only because she loved and cared for her community, but also for her selfless involvement in the community. She was one of my earliest supporters, going so far to host meetings in my honor to get the community invested in my campaign for this office, and making homemade signs encouraging people in her community support me. She had no children, but all the children in the community called her grandma. She was loved by everyone who she encountered along her life. The world is a lesser place without her in it. The whole CD-15 family will miss her warmth and spirit, but we are richer for having the privilege of knowing Janet. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. President.
One minute. Sergeant, is there a problem? Okay, I just needed to hear that. All right. Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this week, we lost a true pioneer, an ecologist in the field of water pollution research. Ruth Patrick was 105 years old when she passed away on Monday. She broke ground not only in environmental research, but as a woman scientist. Of the 70 years she was associated with the Academy of Natural Sciences at Drexel University, the first eight were unpaid. Dr. Patrick's research on freshwater ecosystems led to groundbreaking ways to measure pollution in rivers and streams, back in the days before most people were thinking that way. Her studies led to the insight that the number and types of species in a body of water, its biological diversity reflected environmental stresses. That idea became known as the Patrick Principle and has been applied to even larger settings like entire ecosystems, and lies at the heart of environmental science. Her methods are still being used around the world to measure water quality. She worked as an advisor to Presidents Johnson and Reagan, won the $150,000 John and Alice Tyler Ecology Award for Scientific Achievement, amassed 25 honorary degrees, and in 1996 was awarded the National Medal of Science by President Clinton. She's survived by a son, Charles Hodges V., several stepchildren, and grandchildren. Hers was a long life well-lived, and she left the planet in better shape than she found it.
Thank you, Mr. Keretz. Mr. Labange?
Members, I'm doing this for Mr. Parks, and we have the family here. We want to remember the name and the life of Samir Shafik Gattas, who was a wonderful man, who was born in Cairo, Egypt, and raised his family, eldest of six children, earned his bachelor's degree in chemical engineering at the University of Alexandria in Egypt. And he wanted to pursue the American dream and earned a master's degree. He immigrated to the United States and worked hard to establish a foundation, a foundation that would complete without his family. From the day he arrived, he worked extremely hard, offered two jobs at a time, to bring his family here, one by one. They settled in the Lakewood community of Los Angeles County and started their family with his beloved wife Marina. Samir developed a love for public service and became a deputy with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. He then proved himself once again to become an officer with the Los Angeles Police Department in September of 1975, where he proudly served for 23 years in the LAPD, achieving the rank of Detective II. After his retirement from the force, Samir concluded and continued his service with the LAPD while serving in the forensic lab of the Special Investigation Crime Lab for seven years. Throughout his illustrious career, he was also carried a full-time position in caring for his ailing wife and provided for his family. He was much-loved. Samir was kind and generous, and with his time was always lending a helping hand. Beneath his tough and intimidating exterior, it was said, he had a heart of gold. Samir is survived by his two children, Dr. Christian Gattas and Nina Burke, who's here today with her husband Jonathan, with her four brothers and children, a host of family and friends. He will be dearly missed here on earth, and it's heaven's gain now that he joins his wife Marina and his sister Samah. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Samir Shafik Gattas.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any more adjourning motions? This council is adjourned.